I'm gonna open up the Board of Assessors meeting. And but as soon as we do that, I know she's gonna get up and say. So we'll stay at this. And I would like in the same time to have a moment of silence for victims in Las Vegas shootings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we gathered here to talk about the commitment for 2017. Good evening. And I prepared a municipal tax rate calculation standard form that's required by the state of Maine. And what it says is that the mill rate could be $23.85 per thousand. That would be an increase of 75 cents a thousand on evaluation. So 1,000 would be $7.85. 100,000 would be $75. 200,000 would be a $50 increase in property tax. Okay. We had a few increases. County tax went up. Now we're good.
Again.
It's notable. The state of municipal revenue sharing stayed about the same. Other revenues, those are revenues that we get from excise, cars, boat lanes, all that stuff. That went down about $100,000. We did tap into our undesimated surplus last go around, last year. It was about $110,000 or something like that. We didn't do that this year. So last year it was $461,470. This year it was $302,620. And so that was a big piece of getting the mill rate up, which is portion. So there you have it. Any questions? Anybody want to look this up? About 17 and 16 here together. Those might prepare them.
Interesting.
Okay. Any questions about it? So there you have it. I've prepared the certificate of assessments. A certificate of commitment, which is a document that draws and assigns the Board of Assessors. And that's a warrant that is given by the Board of Assessors or the assessors to the tax collector. Which needs to be signed.
Do you want to do them one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. So we need a motion to sign the warrant.
Okay.
Second. You need a second.
Second.
We gotta make sure Debbie has a chance to get the... Rachel made the motion. All in favor? Okay.
I'll pass them around one at a time. That's the certificate of commitment. And that's for the collector.
So we're doing both of these? Both pages?
Yeah.
Both lines?
Yes. It's all one of the same.
So...
Where there's dash lines, sign them.
Oh, just sign up. Sign up for both of them.
Sign it white. Sign it white line. That's it.
Okay.
Sign on the dot.
No, it's not. They're not dotted. They're solid.
What do you like us to do?
Okay. This is the certificate of assessment to return to the municipal treasurer. Again, that's...
Okay, we need a motion to sign... I'll make a motion to sign the certificate of assessment to be returned to the municipal treasurer. For a second?
Check.
All in favor? Anything else back to you?
Yep. I'm collecting these.
That's fine. Next.
The next one that you'll be signing is the certificate of assessment. The assessors. And that has the actual tax forms.
So I'll make a motion that we sign the assessors certificate of assessment. Do I have a second? Got it? Just double check.
Okay, yeah, we got it.
More information before the Board of Assessors meeting?
Hold on.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
I know you worked hard today and every day when you're here.
Okay.
So you do your best.
You too.
Do your best. All right, so we're gonna open... We're gonna open the board's weapons, Kaita. One of these days. Make a motion to sign the warrants. All in favor?
While we're signing the warrants, can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
No, actually, I'm...
Yeah, I looked at that. Oh, I'm sorry. I read my receipt of...
Okay, you can make a motion then. I don't allow you. If you walk along some, I'm...
Approve the minutes of September 28th.
I can do the 21st one.
Okay.
Who wants a second there?
I have a second there.
All in favor? So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we need to have three. Somebody didn't sign that. I didn't sign that?
You did.
And you didn't sign this one.
I only need that.
There are three.
Oh.
Okay, just sign that one. This one needs to be... We're not signing the warrants. Getting ahead of ourselves. Did you get three signatures on the...
Well, yep.
No, last of these. Okay, so you could actually share the wealth. I got you.
Okay. I was just gonna update the public on the safe harbor. We... The grant was submitted and they received all the necessary documents. We should know something about the next phase in November. And we did have engineer meet with the committee for some preliminary ideas because we'll have to move quickly in the second phase if we do get to land. So that went really well. And under new business, we were asked by the Harvard Board to appoint an alternate to the Harvard Board and his name is Carol Dismore or Jade Dismore, but that's his official name. So we need a motion to appoint Carol Dismore to... Does he want to...
Do you need that motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And I think how that's gonna work is, I know planning board only used that alternate, only voted when there was not a quorum.
Yes.
But I think that in the case of the Harvard Board, they wanted another fisherman out there. If there isn't five people, I think they're gonna allow him to vote. There's just gonna be one alternate. And of course, if there's six people there, then he wouldn't vote.
Okay.
Do you want to sign that?
Yes.
I'll sign this one when you go in. Oh, that's a copy.
No, that's just a guy. Just put aside.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is adult ed. We were... We received...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
We received resignation from Penny Lasky that she felt that we would not be able to complete the required adult ed in the six month probationary period and she felt that she would... Although they worked on it, there was lots of things they thought they had to get done quickly and wasn't going to be successful because she didn't want to go ahead with the program. So we're at a point where we have the adult ed budget, but we haven't assigned it to anyone. We were... We did listen to the Axiom. The Axiom has sent us a new contract, which they wanted to start our till with first. But I asked Renee if there was an agreement drawn up between Axiom and LCOS and there hasn't been. And I believe that we would be going over... I just don't think out of respect for the space they're going to be using at some capacity, that we should just sign this and not allow Kathy Arrington to speak with the Axiom to see how we could best serve the community. So I'm making a motion that we table this contract.
I'd like to do that.
All in favor?
And so everybody knows that she is on board with that, Kathy Arrington.
Yes.
She is ready to meet with them and to work together as a junction.
Renee and Rachel and Kathy and I spoke yesterday about how she felt that it would be most best to...
Yeah.
Because she's worked with... She's spoken with Axiom before, how that we can use their facilities and how that would best help the town.
Yeah, and so it's a compatible and mutually...
Yes, I realize that you had thought maybe we started more... We thought more in terms of January because it's just...
It's too late. We're in October.
You can't...
Yeah.
We need some marketing. We need some students. We can't just... We're open. So...
Yeah.
Okay. Open sand bids. We have bids. Bids were favorite. Okay, you're damn. I think it was close. It was way more than last... That's something I ask every year. Why did we pay you last year?
I don't.
I thought it was last last year.
Well, we may not be able to make a decision. But I mean, we can accept it. It was more than the year before. It was a lot more.
Do we have a copy of the bid? No, I just wanted to get a copy of it.
Of last year? I think I have time. Same with quality tags.
It spelled out exactly the requirements. I read it in very, very detail. Very detailed.
So we probably should have... We probably have a quality tag right in the office. We'll see if they have a copy there. Should have been... Well, if you can find it, Debbie, we'll hold on for a minute. We're just...
Open them up and write down the...
Okay, there's only two. The bias company, if someone wants to take notes for Debbie, that would be helpful. $10.25 per yard. Total cost $25,625.
What was the total?
$25,625. And you got that.
$10.25 a yard?
$25 a yard.
$25,625.
What's that? It's insurance. Sand bid, $10.25 per cubic yard for 2,500 cubic yards of sand for winter road maintenance to be screened 3/8 of an inch and less as described in the advertisement for bid.
What's that?
Oh, this is H&amp;S Construction. I believe that's... That is not Danny Holmes?
Yeah.
That's Danny Holmes. We understand that the works to be completed by November 3rd. Okay, so you wanted the bid notice? So that would be request for bids. Town of Quebec is seeking bids for 2,500 cubic yards of sand for winter road maintenance. Sand is to be screened 3/8 of an inch and less. Aggregates shall be cleaned. And all of the different specifics of it. Going to read the whole act.
No, but do they mention 3/8 inch on there?
Yes. And this one here does not mention... Well, let me look at the... It says the bias company is providing the following proposal for supplying the town of Quebec with 2,500 yards of winter sand. This proposal also includes the trucking and stacking of the 2,500 sand as well as mixing in the salt provided by the town. It doesn't have any... Doesn't say anything. No, it doesn't say that.
However, the... Both of these, however, H&amp;S does.
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is what we need to...
Those are voluntary recense.
Now, Tony, last year, very specific about the size gravel.
Yeah, but they hate it.
Yeah, and that was... He felt that was important.
Were they specific as well?
Yeah. So bias has probably eliminated themselves by not being specific.
Possibly. So you have a motion on the table? Well, pardon me? $50,000 more. No, it's exactly the same.
That's half the same.
$10.25. $10.25 and $10.25. They're both $10.25.
But they've eliminated themselves by not being specific to the...
Well, I mean, the advertisement says it. My initial thought, Ray, why not go back and ask them both?
Well, they could at least have said pertaining to the advertisement.
Which is what Danny Holmes said. He went specifically with exactly what they said.
And the 3/8 is important because we all drove around on the gravel they spread. So we go and we said, oh my god.
And that's who did our sand last year.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a done deal.
Yeah, I'm thinking about it. It's exactly the same.
More professional.
To finish my thought, is it... Not proper to go back to the two companies and say, "Look, we have $10.25 each. Would anyone like to read bid?"
No, I don't think you can do that.
Are you allowed to do that? That's why I'm asking.
I'm not because you're voting out.
No, you have to... You have exactly the same bids, so then you have to reach that.
No, I mean, no, the asking is not to read that. The asking is, you both $10.25. Anybody want to go lower?
Well, I think that...
I don't know if you can do that.
Express a little bit of inconsistency with it. It was very high the same.
Can I see you, George?
I want you to look at that.
I don't mind Danny. Danny explained himself. I want to look at this one.
Okay.
So I guess that was a no.
It was a no.
That would be a good job.
That was a good try.
Yes, a no.
That's done.
Did they say that they would also supply the trucking and stacking?
It includes material transported, mixed with salt provided on site, piled in the Quebec Public Works sand and salt shed. And when it was needed to be completed. By November 3rd.
Yeah, they're very specific and professional.
I don't think... I think it's a no-brainer that we give it to H&amp;S.
Yeah, I don't see anything where it says that they might find the 3/8 inch.
Yeah, and that was an important component of the requirements.
It was.
Well...
Okay, guys, somebody make a motion.
I make a motion that we go with H&amp;S.
For a second?
Based on the professionalism in their bid.
All right. Now, you got a second?
Do you want a second?
Yeah, I want to go elsewhere.
You're gonna go for more?
No, I want to go with Bill Ransell.
Well, and he has to... So, okay, so...
All right, sometimes you don't get what you...
I know. Rachel, I'm gonna second it if I can't have anybody with this.
But does anybody want to ask why I want to go with Bill Ransell? Because Bill Ransell...
I'm gonna ask on this one. Why?
Because Bill Ransell, two years ago, brought every piece of equipment he had and bailed us out of a big mess. And when he took a spin in for sand, we said, see you, Bill. You know what? That doesn't cut it with me.
And we did not receive an invoice?
What? No, we did not. But I just want to give him kudos, thank him again.
Yes. I think that's...
And I know he felt like he got $25,000.
He felt like he better boot it up his butt and I don't feel... I don't like...
And that's fair. And you can sympathize.
Then it's okay.
This is a new day.
Yeah. Brand new day.
Okay, do we have a person?
I'm gonna show that though.
All in favor?
I don't have one.
I don't... Understood.
Yeah. Big compromise.
You gotta say yes or no. Say yes or no.
That was a yes.
That was a yes.
Did somebody take her washing call tonight?
I think that's Dan. It wasn't me. I don't think they called her because she washing. Fisherman because she want me. Bitches at the barber cross from the post office letter. Close for your discussion with my sister Karen... Excuse me?
What?
Would you... I see that you want to leave, but how about looking at your agenda in the letter? The close for your discussion with...
This one. Chanel?
Dear Ms. Gray, the close for your discussion with my sister Karen Code is a check payable to the town of Quebec in the amount of $1,028. The payment represents a cost for the benches to be installed in the park across from the post office in memory of June Shagnan. We thank you very much for your time and assistance in getting the approvals to proceed with the benches. Our family is very appreciative. Our mom had wanted a bench to call her own during her lifetime. And we get great satisfaction knowing that this goal will be accomplished in her memory.
Very nice.
Oh. And I guess, do we have to...
Does this...
Other side?
This is for certificate?
Yes. To the children of June Shagnan, the town of Quebec wishes to express our gratitude for the generous donation of $1,028 for replacement benches at the Park Cross from the post office. These benches in memory of your mother, June Shagnan, will help beautify our downtown park, making it more inviting and appealing to our residents and visitors. What a wonderful way to help preserve the memory of your mother and get back to the town since she so loved. Once again, thank you. I love that image. I mean, I wrote that in. So I have a motion to sign this?
Assumed.
All in favor? Oh, trying to do that nicely. Isn't that nicely? Now, is there gonna be a plaque or something? Does she even have a little plaque? She just gonna put the four... There's four benches, actually. New business, letter of endorsement for Emma Cluster Wheeler. So we got a request from Emma Cluster Wheeler, who worked on the Brownfield Grant. They are the store society to... They want to be part of... They want to be submitted in the project for ACEC Engineering Excellence Awards competition. And they were asking us for a letter of recommendation. And we need to make a motion to allow Renee to sign this letter.
I make that motion.
Have a second?
What does ACEC stand for?
Probably, I have no idea.
Something, construction.
Wait a minute. Engineering... No, it's the 2018 ACEC Engineering Excellence Award Competition. And I don't know what that acronym is. It's called an acronym. I don't know what it is.
Media conference.
Something, something.
Yes, something. Something they want. Does anybody know? No. So we make a motion that...
Are you guys excited that they would do that?
Second. All in favor?
Just thought I'd ask.
Do you know what ACEC is?
American Certification of something or other. I don't know.
Engineering...
We see it's in the letter.
Environmental, construction.
Is that something that you need to know before we agree with the environmental...
No, it's just that they started scope banding about it. It's always good to know a thing.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to not... How about subject to her letting you know what ACEC means? Can you sign it then?
I'm surprised that they don't include it in their letter.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait here. It's American Council of Engineering Companies. And it's all stairs.
American Council of Engineering Companies.
And it's in your packet. Two letters are all in your packet.
Oh. Who made the motion?
Joanne made the motion.
Go ahead.
Rachel made the second. Are we all in favor?
How's there?
Now, last but not least, we have one of the properties that was paid off would like their quitclaim deed. So we need a motion to sign the quitclaim deed for the person. The address is...
Second.
All in favor? Oh, Anne Rosenbro. Now, Barbara, this is where we need a witness.
Hang on, do you want me to come now and sign it?
Okay.
Well, we'll wait. We'll bring it to you after we all sign it. Then you could sign five times witness.
I'll wait.
Are you watching us? Oh, four times. There's only four of us. Because Debbie has to notify us, so she can't be the witness. Other than committee updates. Public comment? Committee updates?
I don't know if anybody notices the work this being done on the former Sunrise Cafe downtown.
Yes.
It is impressive.
It is nice. Very nice. Do they have a buyer for that?
Yes. Well, it's heavily from Blue Hill to... Oh, really? Yes. It's been opened in January.
Debbie wants to buy her for Blue Hill's law.
Very nice. Very nice.
We want to go do committee updates?
Yeah, I can start. Let me start. After breaking for the summer, we met on Monday for the Down East EMS, Emergency Medical Services. And we will be getting a new ambulance here in the town of Quebec. It's not new. It's 2010. It has 28,000 miles on it. We're also purchasing a 2018 transfer, what they call box. And that is to do transfers only. That will be stationed up in Baileyville. We are paying $70,000 down on the refund loan. So that will leave that, that will take that from 345,000 down to 270. So we're pretty proud of that. Things are going good. We just urge people to... If anybody is interested in medical services, medical field, you know, we are every day trying to change people and we do have some going to paramedic school right now. We're doing really well, but we do... It's a field that, you know, people are in and out, in and out, in and out all the time. So we need new faces.
Thank you, Julian.
Thank you for going to those meetings. That's a great news.
That's a hard thing in the age of...
It is a hard... Does that affect it at all, the fact that we pay down the loan? Does it affect our... Next year, will that affect our...
We're what's paid off eventually. Yeah, hopefully we keep doing, paying 70, 70, hopefully.
Rachel?
We have not met since our last meeting. We are meeting on the Friday the 13th.
Economic development?
Oh, no, economic development. I'm sorry. I thought it was... About the recycle committee.
I'll have to meet around one, more than one committee.
Yeah. The recycle committee met and we heard from Mr. Scravani about the plaque at the Stockford Park. And from Mr. Stockford about his addition to the Stockford. And it was quite a lengthy meeting. We were going to talk about our focus, but we only got about two minutes in to talk about our ongoing focus about getting broadband coming into this town, which will be maybe our only focus from now on. But the Stockford Park plaque is wonderful that going forward, it's gonna be fun.
Good.
But, um, the Stockford Park plaque is wonderful, it's going forward, it's gonna be fun. Yeah.
On this, um, topic, the broadband. Yes, sir, how does that help everybody?
How does having broadband help everybody? It is an incredible enticement to younger families moving into the area. It will allow them to, um, work as, at a business out of their home. It is an incredible enticement to young families into any area, not just retired people.
Yeah, I'll tell you, also, one of the, and I think both high schools, but.
Yes.
Use what is called backpack, and the students need to have that accessibility when they're working rates, and to submit their work to go through, uh, those programs that check for, uh, what's going on for, uh, when you've copied.
Pleasure.
Pleasure, their programs the teachers use that the students have to submit, so.
Distance learning is maybe, yeah. Um, I think going forward, Michael, to answer that, it may end up costing the town some money, but the payback is going to be tenfold. If you're attracting younger families into this town, you're attracting taxpayers. You're attract, attracting people with children who will want to go to the school. And I think in the end, it, it'll build up the community.
Are you looking for apparently grants, and then there'll be a.
Oh, yes, there are, there, now there are just tons of things out there to help you, and there are people, there are other towns around us. Esports significantly have, have got it. I think Ellsworth just got it. So we're tapping into everybody, you know, there's, it's not like reinventing, we, you need to go to people who have done it successfully and let them give you the best information possible. But we need to, the economic development historically has been all over the map. You know, we just talk about all kinds of ideas, and we just don't get focused, and so we just said, enough. Let's focus on one thing that we can do and do about. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, updates?
Uh, revolving loan, I would defer to two members of our audience as I was working, that we need, that we did not need. Which would, again, as I appeal to those to go on the website, with the opportunity that the revolving loan the town has to offer, a business opportunity, so please take a look. So then we can have meetings.
The Shellfish Committee meeting should be next Monday, it's the second Monday in the month at six. Make sure the date. Or that, is that coming to stay, that's all. I will, if it's not gonna be on Monday, Wednesday, I think they all want it to come anyway, I'll open it up if they do, otherwise I'll let everybody know, I'll let them know. Because I know you like to go to that. Safe Harbor just met, the next meeting is gonna be November 1st at five o'clock. And when the grant for the Stockford Park, the little trail there, was submitted on time, I believe, by Mr. Stockford, and I reviewed it with Renee, and it looks, uh, fine. And hopefully, it's for fifty thousand dollars, so there's a lot of in-kind work, I did question that, because I know we only voted for a thousand dollars of cash, so there's in-kind work in there that I, I wasn't quite sure about.
You should probably include, uh, work of my custom on the plaque, I would think.
How much do you need? How much do you need?
We'll have to get together with Mr. Stockford, he actually wrote the, wrote the grant.
Because, you know, depending on how large a rock I locate, I can, you know, I, I have a sliding scale.
Oh, okay.
Not that much near out.
Well, I'm already taking fights in rock.
Well, just keep that, uh, open there for a while until we go.
We got an update on the Morning Star? Yes, the plaque is in the ground, I kept going by and looking, and it's like, where is it, where is it? It's there.
Good.
It's here. Yes.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
That's nice.
I'm gonna have to go check, I did not know.
Good. So, anything else?
I, I do have one thing. Um, due to the, um, the massacre that we had in, in, um, Las Vegas, and the things that have been going on around this area in the last couple of days, with the, um, school threats and everything, you can't stress enough, people, please be vigilant. I mean, someone somewhere knows something about these incidents, and please be vigilant. Um, these things that are happening the last two days with these schools, it scares these kids to death. They don't wanna go to their house, they don't wanna go to school, and that shouldn't be that way. Um, you know, especially in Washington County. Um, so please.
Something you need to say something.
Be, yeah, if you see something, tell somebody.
That's the catchphrase, New York sees something, say something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Have we contacted the county police about this? What?
Are they?
Oh, yeah, they, they, I, according to.
We're close.
About hours ago, they've arrested somebody. Uh-huh, so hopefully, um.
That was it.
Are they still on phone calls? I don't know, I, I really don't know much about it.
I just. Ask the mayor or anything, they're keeping it kind of.
They keep, keep it very quiet, but, um, the main thing is, our children are scared to death, and, and, you know, it shouldn't be that way.
Public comment? Alright, then.
I think motion adjourned.
Second? All in favor? Thank you, thank you all for coming. Yeah, what you think about for.
I saw that idiot, John Cheney, walking up the down street today. Running. I mean, what is he on?